Good afternoon and welcome. Now called to order the meeting of the Georgetown County Council for January 10, 2023. Councilmember Carolina will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us and allowing us to enter into this new year 2023. We ask for your guidance. We ask for support. We ask for wisdom as we make tough decisions in this meeting tonight. Help us to carefully consider information that's been gathered. May those sharing information give us pertinent notes so we are clearly understand. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to wisely consider our options considering the pros and cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out as stewards over the land and as elected officials for the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. We ask for these things in your mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Black, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carolina. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda as published. Do we have a motion to approve the Jennifer Pryor meeting as published?
No moves.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor? Next on the agenda is item number four, Special Reports and Presentations. Item number four A is election of council officers. First will be election of the council chairman. Do we have a motion or nomination, rather?
Mr. Watson, I nominate Louis Morant as chair.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Louis Morant to serve as chair or any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, then is there a motion to approve the nomination of Mr. Morant as chair? So moved. All right, second?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. I'll now turn the gavel over to Mr. Morant as the newly elected chairman to conclude the remainder of the agenda in the meeting.
Okay, good evening to all and happy new year to you. We'll now move, we'll continue moving forward with the election of our officers. The floor is now being opened for the election of vice chair, and I nominate Ms. Lilly Jean Johnson to serve as vice chair. May I have a second, please?
Second.
It has been seconded by Councilman Carolina and Councilor McCall to hold Ms. Johnson to be our vice chair. Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor of said nomination, please raise your hand. Oppose? Congratulations, Ms. Johnson. Let's give our officers a round of applause, please. We will move forward with our agenda, but prior to doing so, we would like to welcome the two newcomers to council, Councilman Elliott and Councilor McCall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I'm sure we can move Georgetown County forward with your assistance and participation. Thank you all. And let us give them a round of applause for taking, having ability to run the council. We'll move down to our nonprofit spotlight. The first nonprofit we will have will be Georgetown Family YMCA. Presentation by Ryan Finney.
Evening, council. I'm joined here, make sure people can hear me, I'm joined here by our branch executives at our Georgetown Family YMCA location, Zach Marshall, and also our branch executive for our newly acquired Polles Island Family YMCA, previously Tylenol Health Point, Kim Van Landingham. We are thankful to be working in this area. There was acts of good faith in adding a YMCA to this community that started nearly 20 years ago, and it arrived at the building of the Georgetown County Family YMCA on Brown's Ferry Road just in 2008. We are a part of the YMCA of Coastal Carolina. We have a location in Myrtle Beach, and of course, here in Georgetown. Through a couple of years of work and collaboration with Tylenol Health, in July of this year, we named Tylenol Health the exclusive healthcare partner of the YMCA. Our board felt that Tylenol Health system most closely aligned with our vision and our mission in our three areas of focus are in youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. And with that, we took over the operations of Health Point. Through our two facilities, we run a variety of programs, one that the county has supported for a number of years, being the White Splash Program, where every second grader in Georgetown County schools participates in sessions of water safety training that's done in conjunction with the Benel Foundation, the school district, and of course, Parks and Rec through the county that supported that. We really appreciate that. We're finishing our 11th year. There are children graduating from high school now that have, that were initial participants in that program. The legacy that's going to mean for ground in prevention, we're really proud of. Appreciate your support. Youth development programs, we run, love childcare programs. We're in Polles Island over at Walk Elementary, and then we run a program here in collaboration with Georgetown Presbyterian Church. And we serve currently about 4,400 residents through our facilities. Provide financial assistance for those that could not afford access to membership, access to swim lessons, childcare services that we do. So with that, really just wanted to thank you for your support and give the announcement. Any questions of myself or our leaders at our branches?
Thank you. Any comments from council or questions? Okay, hearing that, thank you. Thank you for all you do for Georgetown County and support.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Lillian Channet from SBA.
Good evening, members of the council, everybody present. My name is Liliana Channet. I'm with Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance, and I'm here proudly with the team that came on the ground about four weeks ago, opening the Business Recovery Center, that's at Polles Island, at the Inter Exchange in North Litchfield. And we serve your community after the, you know, impact of Hurricane Ian in the area. We don't just serve businesses. Small Business Administration Disaster Assistant helps residents as well as nonprofit organizations, including churches, that they've been impacted. With that being said, I've been trying to be part of any, you know, councilman member meeting to the counties that they were affected, and they are primary in this presidential declarations, which is, of course, you know, Georgetown County, Charleston, and Ori County. I've also saturated the media with a lot of information, because information is power, and power it brings to your residents and constituency, the information they need to be able to recover in the long run. What we offer is disaster assistance loans in two forms, in forms of disaster assistance loans that are to your private property that it's physically damaged, and that's for residents up to $200,000 with a very low interest rate, and for, you know, businesses and nonprofits up to $2 million with a very low interest rate, starting at 1.87% for the nonprofits, with a repayment up to 30 years, and the first year of repayment is interest-free. Of course, on the ground, you know, with our sister agency FEMA, we've been trying to cover all the areas affected. We, you know, they close their centers. They continue also to offer assistance through their mitigation, you know, program. They just opened today in Ori County at Home Depot in Oak Street, a mitigation table where they help the people that they've been impacted by Hurricane Ian. Don't want to talk on behalf of FEMA, but we are working very closely together, FEMA and SBA. We are like, you know, in this portion of the disaster. Once a disaster strike, we're always present, and we try to do justice to the constituents and residents that they've been affected. The deadline, it's approaching very fast. This declaration, deadline for registration with FEMA is January 23. Our, you know, declaration actually for SBA, it has two deadlines. One deadline that finishes on January 20. So all the residents affected, businesses and nonprofits that they had physical damage, they have until January 20 to fill in their application. That could be done either at the center that's still open. That could be done also online at sba.gov/disaster, or they could call our customer service at 1-800-659-2955 and ask for an application online. With that being said, that is the message tonight. The deadline is approaching. But I want to leave a lot of information, and I'm glad that the chamber was very responsive in this county and in all the counties affected, to spread the information and proliferate all this aid that it's given. Businesses could apply for an economic injury disaster assistance loan, which you know it from the pandemic, the idyl. That loan, it's available till August 21 of this year, and that's also up to $2 million. And you don't need any physical damage to your business or your nonprofit for that. I just want to stress out, these are not ordinary loans. People, when they hear the word loan, they get deterred, and they don't want to look through the process. This is kind of like, I'd like to call it like the wheel of like a 360 circle. FEMA starts the process with the immediate assistance. They refer you to us. Once we get the application, we look into it, and if the application is not submissible or it's not acceptable by SBA standards, then it's reverted back to FEMA for additional funds. If you don't fill in the information with SBA, you are not entitled to any additional federal funding. So it's very important to fill in the information and follow the process the way it was, you know, created. SBA is, you know, proudly announcing that up to date, we actually dispersed $1.5 million in this declaration. The declaration is still going on. We accept application online every day, but the center, it needs more traffic. So I urge you to, if you have, you know, residents that they have not been made aware of this, you know, please, you know, refer them to us. We would love to help them through the process. With that being said, I'd like to say a big thank you for your hospitality and all this time that I spend here, and that I'm leaving this disaster with a lot of lessons learned. And, you know, I'm going to put in my reports to be taken in consideration for future disasters that, you know, more assistance is needed in terms of mitigation. So up to now, the mitigation with SBA is 20% on top of the loan once you get approved. That money could be used not for repair and replace like the original disaster loan, but it could be used for actually bringing your property up to standards, bringing, putting shutters to your house, you know, for the next hurricane season, and helping your property to be at standard and at code with hurricane season. So this is my mission. If I, you know, pass over the three minutes that I was allowed, I apologize, but thank you so much for the time.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Yes, Councilman Anderson.
Ms. Channet, is that the way you pronounce that?
Channet.
Channet, okay. I was close. Anyway.
Well, Liliana's good enough.
What I was wondering, at the end of the day, is this, this is really just a low-interest loan? It's not like you're giving away cash to people in need?
It's not a loan. It's a disaster assistance loan, which means it's not a commercial loan. It's not like, it doesn't work like a commercial loan, but it does need to be repaid.
But it does need to be repaid.
Yes, and it has 30 years repayment, up to 30 years. That's, you know, long-term.
We have an office of resilience in South Carolina, and they take care of distressed housing. So do you work along with them at all in any of these things you do, or are they aware of?
I've been trying to make aware everybody that it's either in, you know, pre or post hurricane, you know, assistance to the residents to know that we are here. In case I need to get in touch with somebody in particular, you know, my contact information, it's available, so please let me know, and I'll contact them immediately.
But anybody can qualify for a loan assistance?
Loan assistance is through the criteria of SBA for repayment capability, and it has to be a person that, or a business that has been in business for at least six months, a residence that has been a residence at the time of the hurricane, and it has, you know, certain criteria of eligibility. I actually brought with me some flyers that would help, you know, I actually brought with me some flyers that would help, you know, to, to just like, you know, clarify those things. But eligibility criteria has to be according to SBA standard.
Thank you.
Okay, Liliana, to date, do you have a breakdown in Georgetown County? How many resident applications have been taken and how many business applications and how many have been quote approved?
Unfortunately, we don't have that number broken down by county or by region. We will have it, you know, further down the road, and I will make that information available. So you would know exactly where the application come from. It's more than 70% residential to date, but we start to get like, you know, once the centers are closing, a lot of the applications online, they're going to be like idle. So they're going to be for economic impact. We usually traditionally, that's how it goes, but we will make that information available to you so you could have.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Liliana, the, I heard you when you said the, the businesses up to 2 million got 1.8% interest, but I missed the residential.
1.78 for nonprofit organization, residential is 2.83%, and businesses, they start at 3.02%. But all that information is available online. It depends case-to-case basis. The good thing about the disaster loan, it's a fixed rate loan up to 30 years of repayment and interest-free for 12 months.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks for all you do. Thanks for your assistance. We move down to our recognition of Employee of the Quarter, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, we have a unique situation tonight. We do Employee of the Quarter once a quarter and been doing this for a number of years. And I think tonight is the first time we've ever had a dual selection for Employee of the Quarter. And normally I ask those folks to come out of the audience and step up and join me, but the two nominees tonight are actually up front, so we'll just let them stay for a little while and then at the end we'll, we'll get a photo op if that's acceptable to everyone. They both threatened to beat me to death if I made them come up here anyway. So these two folks, Ms. Teresa Floyd and Ollie Lewis, who you all know very, very well, were nominated by our county administrator, Ms. Angela Christian. And a few excerpts, and you see this in your packet. Ms. Christian, and I thought this was very funny the way she, she wrote it up, so I'll read this. She said, you know, just imagine all of the crazy questions that these, these individuals get on a day-to-day basis, everything from what is the gray man to there's alligators in my yard? What do I do? And, you know, these two folks, they're, they're oftentimes the last ones to leave in the afternoon. They're, they're trying to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed to make sure that whatever craziness is going on the next day is, is ready to go when, when everyone else hits the door. And, and this is a theme, and I'll bring this up again in a few minutes, but Ms. Christian says that these two folks are the make it happen team. They're the unsung heroes, the behind-the-scenes folks, you know, upper-level folks, they come up with crazy ideas and harebrained schemes oftentimes, but it's folks like Teresa and Ollie who come and say, you know what, I can make that happen. Just if y'all just stand out of my way, I'll get it done. And one thing that Ms. Christian didn't put on here in her presentation to, to the nominating committee, she says, and they oftentimes talked me off the ledge when I needed, and I, and I thought that was very striking. She mentions that, you know, on a personal note, between the two of them, that they, they helped reassure her that things are moving in the right direction, that, that we're on track, that things are getting done, and that we're, we're doing our best to serve the, the council members and the citizens of Georgetown County. So for that, they are being recognized as Employees of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of '22. We have some, some awards for them tonight, some plaques. Mr. Chair, if we could get you to come down and we will get a photograph with these two individuals together. I think that's, this, this would be a first. So if we could have these two folks come up front.
Since these two persons really serve council so diligently, I'm going to ask the entire council to take a picture with them along with our administrator.
Fantastic job, dear sir.
Good. Hey, Ms. Ackerman, our 2022 Employee Volunteer of the Year.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I want to make a little distinction because this can be a little confusing. So we have two categories awards for volunteers. The one that we're presenting now at this time is our Employee Volunteer of the Year. This is a county employee who does volunteer work in our community, and they're recognized for their volunteer work. The next item on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be deferred until the next meeting. That is a volunteer, that is a person who is not a county employee, but they volunteer and do work on the county's behalf. So at this time, I would like to present Master Firefighter Paramedic Nick Crippen. She works at our Midway Fire Department. And Ms. Crippen, firefighter Crippen, is a, being recognized as our Employee Volunteer of the Year for the work that she does with the burned children in the state of South Carolina. And I don't know whether her passion for helping burn children came after or before, but I, I think she says after. So firefighter Crippen, she does a lot of work each year as a counselor and mentor with children who are burned, severely burned. She works at a camp during, a summer camp is called Camp Can Do. So during the course of the year, she spends a lot of time working with Camp Can Do. She manages the aluminum can drive at the fire department, and the sale of those cans are funded to Camp Can Do, which is a partnership between, and I've got that Burn Children's Fund and the MUSC Pediatric Burns Center. And then each summer, she takes her hard-earned vacation time and spends that at Camp Can Do counseling those children and making sure that they have fantastic experience and helping them to understand that they can do anything. You know, they don't need to let their, their predicament set them back. It's for, so for all the time and dedication and volunteer work that firefighter Crippen does, we'd like to recognize her as our Employee Volunteer of the Year. And we have a whole game.
Brandon, Brandon, I'd like to shake this young lady's hand. We go way back. How you doing, young man? Congratulations, dear.
Okay, it's my understanding, Ms. Ackerman, that the Volunteer of the Year is going to be deferred until a next meeting to do?
Yes, sir, that was my understanding. She was unable to attend tonight.
Okay, so we'll move on down to the 2022 Manager of the Year now.
Yes, sir. So this is our, our annual award that we do. We select one folk, one person, a county employee in a management position each year to receive this award. This year's nominee and successful candidate is Chief Brian Ullam. Chief Ullam is our Division Chief of Training for the Georgetown County Fire Department. So Chief Ullam has quite a huge job. He is responsible for maintaining all the training standards and records and preparing all of the firefighters and the volunteers. And I think if you look in your package, you'll see where it's like 62 full-time firefighter personnel and 78 volunteers. So it's quite a cadre of folks. He maintains all of those, the training standards, the records, the programs, the whole nine yards. But in addition to that, and one of the main reasons why Chief Ullam is being recognized this year, is we came up, the, the, the writer Ellis, our county administrator, and some other folks came up with this great idea that we would implement our own fire academy. And we said, man, that should be easy. And Chief Ullam says, I don't think it's going to be that easy, but I'll get it done. So along him and along with a lot of other folks, not only is he training recruits for Georgetown County, but they decided it would make a lot of sense to coordinate efforts. So it's county fire, midway fire, city fire. I think y'all might have had Garden City folks or somebody from Myrtle Beach, Ori County Fire in, in this. We actually had two classes now. We've had two graduations. They, they, it's been a tremendous success. Chief Ullam has been the main driving force behind this. He's the main trainer, and he coordinates with folks from other outside agencies and departments to come in and help him train. And because we're so short on paramedics, and he is a certified paramedic, he actually covers shifts on his off time, which I don't know when you ever get any off time, but he covers shifts on his off time to fill in for some of the paramedics to let them get some relief. So for all of these reasons and many more, he is being recognized as our 2022 Manager of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Team Georgetown has some of the most wonderful employees. Thank you for your services, really. We'll move down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. At the expiration of the time period, please note that, well, you'll see a countdown on the screen for your time period, so please limit yourself to the time and please watch the screen so you'll know how much more time you have. And we ask that you end your comments promptly when your time period has expired. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signing for public comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have 18 speakers sign up for public input tonight, and each will have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Mr. Everett Allen.
Good evening. I'm Everett Allen. I live in Polley's Island. I want to talk to you tonight about water. And it's not a subject that you guys usually have, but I have been blessed to be chosen to be on the PD River Basin Council. And that's something that most people don't even know exists. It's out of the ENR, and it's commissioned by the state legislature. We meet once a month for two years, and the goal is to keep water available to the citizens of Georgetown County and the whole PD River Basin, which starts at our north line and ends in the Walker Mall when y'all back. Includes the Walker Mall and Black River. It's everything to go through this bay. I can't tell you what it does, but we were blessed that the South Carolina Wildlife Magazine, January and February issue of 2023, has two wonderful articles about the future of water and the availability of water for the residents of the PD River Basin and all of South Carolina. So I thought it was something that our leaders should know about because as a council, we can come up with recommendations at the end of our two years, but we don't make any rules. You guys make the judgments in the room. So I'm just asking you to read this, be educated in what we're doing. In a year and a half from now, when we come back to you, you'll understand what we were all about. Thank you.
Ray Sanders.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Ray Sanders. I'm a licensed tattoo artist. I meet all state requirements through the state of South Carolina and all the criterias. I travel along continental U.S. Tattoo and Tattoo Convention, which I've been accepted for, also been accepted to tattoo internationally. As right now, as far as Georgetown, I'm eliminated to two zones, heavy industrial, light industrial. Neither one of them meet my needs to perform my line of work. They do not cater to the general public as my profession does. I found a location that meets the state anti-HEC regulations for tattooing, however it's own general commercial. I've tried to request a variance and was told by Ms. Richardson I couldn't do so. I've also was advised to contact Mr. Carolina. I've talked to Mr. Carolina over the past few days, and it seems like he's getting the same runaround that I've been getting over the past of eight years. I have already started a petition several months ago that's already exceeded over 800 signatures in my favor. And basically what I'm here for now is asking for lenience so I can operate my business the way I need to operate it into a safe area. That'll be it. Thank you.
Gina Brown.
Good evening, Georgetown County council members and newly elected ones and those attending tonight. My name is Gina Brown. I'm with Silicon Ranch, the developers of the solar facility in Lambertown. This evening I want to talk about some of the things that have happened, changes we've made with conversations with you and with a lot of you. Prior to September, we revised the design to significantly reduce wetland impacts to less than 0.5 acres. In response to public concerns, we've widened the buffer of remaining trees from 25 feet to 65 feet for the properties along Walker Road. Of course, wetlands behind those homes will not be disturbed. Silicon Ranch has developed a draft landscape plan showing vegetative buffers to screen the project from nearby residents. We've also adjusted fencing to maintain, excuse me, maintain wildlife corridors throughout the site and have committed to using wildlife fencing. Silicon Ranch is pursuing South Carolina Department Silicon Ranch is pursuing South Carolina Department of Natural Resources and Clemson University Solar Habitat certification. Silicon Ranch is proposing over one hundred acres of pollinator planning along Saints Delight Road and other areas of the project. Silicon Ranch has met onsite with Clemson Extension to discuss these unique habitats. And just today, we met with the director of Clemson's James C. Kennedy Waterfowl and Wetlands Conservation Center to discuss possible partnerships and research opportunities. As some of you know, because you got a letter, we've applied for required state stormwater permit and coastal zone consistency and county land disturbance permits. Neighbors within four hundred feet received a letter, a notice from the county and a letter from Silicon Ranch explaining the permit request. Silicon Ranch is working with the county to review the design, which is modeled to prevent an increase in runoff and drainage issues. Also, lastly, we've been working with the county submitting a full comprehensive decommissioning plan, which goes beyond our word for equipment removal and, as we said before, to return the land in better condition than we found it when we purchased. Sorry, that timeline got me there. Excuse me. Thank you for your time tonight, and we look forward to answering your questions.
Dwayne Draper.
I'm Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Elliott and Ms. Mercado on their election to the county council and thank them for their commitment to serving residents of the Waukegan neck in their respective districts. Congratulations also to Chairman Moran on his reelection to county council. Best wishes to all our council members for a productive and beneficial 2023. Second, I'd like to offer support for a couple of campaign suggestions that would go a long way in providing transparency and public information to all your constituents and better prepare you as county council members and your planning commission members for your meetings. Current publication of agendas and packets in advance of both county council and planning commission meetings on the Friday. Preceding the meetings does not offer enough time for full review and comment. A ten-day advance notice would be much, much better served, both the public and our county officials. In addition, planning commission notices should be provided to a much wider community than the current four-hundred-foot requirement, at least double that, as many property owners are affected by potential new development in their neighborhoods. Finally, as you consider the natural resources element at second reading tonight, I'd like to commend the planning department for their diligence in reaching out to diverse stakeholders in the county for review and comment, updating the draft numerous times for this finished product. We look forward to continued transparency and opportunities for review and comment on all future elements of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Dr. Jason Rosenberg.
Thank you, council and new council people. Thank you. Are there any negatives to solar energy or solar fields or Silicon Valley? These people say there are none. There are zero negatives. I beg to differ. Part of our Georgetown County Council ordinance 2018, Section 632, Solar Energy Facility Floating District, the county recognizes that provisions should be established that protect nearby properties from any negative effects such as a facility may produce. I'm going to tell you about the negative effects of a solar field. Have you seen the price of eggs lately? Seven dollars for a dozen eggs. We're losing agricultural land. When a farm or forest is developed into solar, and there's a scarcity of that type of land in the area, you get a double negative. You lose the farm and forest amenities that are highly valued, and you get the disamenities of a solar development. Losing that natural area and replacing it with something industrial is where the biggest negatives arrive. In 2021, Kentucky KRS 100.203 allows councils such as yourself to prohibit construction of photovoltaic power stations on agricultural lands. I'm short on two minutes' time. The community should make efforts through comprehensive land use planning to protect soils that are most suitable for agriculture and direct other development or approachment uses to non-suitable soils and areas adjacent to near-urbanized lands while maintaining continually supreme agricultural lands. There are studies from University of Rhode Island, University of Kentucky, showing home values will be decreased by up to thirty percent within one mile of the solar fields. Two concerns of aesthetics and property values are intrinsically linked. It is well-established that homes value like Miami on the ocean is worth much more money because people want to pay for that. Next to a solar field, people do not want to pay for that. There's two peer-reviewed journals. They have data to show that, that property values increased next to a solar field. They publish the data. There's two university studies, peer-reviewed journals. In my world, that's everything. Peer-reviewed journals, that's negatively decreased. There's a neg- For our ordinance, there is negative effects from the facility, and it's diminished land value. That's why I go on. Please use justice.
Randy Campbell.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak and for your time, as well as all the community members. And I am a real estate broker for eleven years. I've been here a few times, few times could talk, couldn't, others. My maiden name is Lambert, so several of my family members, the community as a whole, very early on, reached out with concerns as to what this would potentially do to their property values. I serviced the entire Grand Strand, and in talking to them, I said, you know, the wheels of progress are coming in, so what do you want that to look like? And surprisingly enough, they would choose single-family homes as opposed to the solar panels. The reasons for that is, is when you would allow new construction and things to come into these communities, the developers, the builders, the architects, property management, and those in law enforcement, and those in law and finance tend to benefit from those jobs. Also, the taxes, as well as the revenues and city fees that would be accrued from the local municipality would absolutely help to support that. Ory County just had its highest tax year ever. The, being able to do the building here would also encourage purchasing from local plumbers to put the, do those installs in. Nationally, the National Association of Homes said building a hundred affordable rental homes, whether you lived in them or rented them out, would generate in excess of eleven-point-seven million dollars annually in income, two-point-two million in taxes. So if we want to create more road, improve the road infrastructure in the school district for those living in Georgetown County, perhaps we will build some new homes, so people from out of our area will bring in their new resources and their trades to continue to elevate what Georgetown County is already doing. By buying our supplies locally, you're going to feel the long-term effects of the building and giving great communities for our children and new opportunities for them to meet new people relocating into the area. With, there's a home shortage everywhere you go, so we have individuals, I'm sure, who are being price fixed by rent and things like that, who don't have the opportunity. Holding this land and stopping their children for opportunities for these sales and bringing new business in, I think is a poor decision. Thank you for your time.
Becky Ryan.
Good evening. My name is Becky Ryan. I'm the North Coast Office Director with the Coastal Conservation League. I'm also on the board for the Carolina Wetlands Association. And I believe there's been a letter that's been cited from the Carolina Wetlands Association expressing concerns about the solar farm. I do want to clear that up, that those circumstances have changed a bit since that letter was submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers. Silicon Ranch and HGR have redesigned the development to avoid the wetlands, and we certainly appreciate that effort. We also appreciate the use of buffers and wildlife fencing and pollinator seed mixes to support the habitat of the area. We think that this would be a great opportunity for Georgetown County to move towards a more renewable energy future, especially with the planned closure of the Unia Coal Plant. This is a much safer, much healthier option for Georgetown County as a whole than certainly a coal plant. Many fewer health impacts, so we, we support this effort. We hope that you will consider it with all due consideration. Thank you so much.
Marita Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Marita Wilson. Here on behalf of the town of Andrews, I service the town administrator there. At the December 2022 meeting, there was a question posed by Councilmember Carolina in regards to ATAX funding and if the town had made an application specifically in regards to the Andrews Heritage Festival. I'm here to provide an answer to that for you, sir. In February of 2017, Andrews made an application to ATAX for that very festival that we were trying to garner some interest for cultural and tourism in that area of the county. We were on the agenda for the March twenty-third ATAX meeting. The application was made for twenty-five thousand dollars. We were told that that meeting, that we needed to take out the advertising portion and make that application made to the tourism committee, who would be receiving those applications for advertising only. So we revised that application, and we submitted a new application, as we were told, to do so in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. During that April sixth meeting, we received zero dollars. Everyone else was funded. So we wanted to let you know specifically, as it regards to the town of Andrews, we have made application before in regards to the Heritage Festival. And because it was stated that it did not meet the guidelines, we wanted to provide with that response. I also want to thank Administrator Christian for fixing a 2019 ATAX communication concern for an application that we made that we did receive funding for, but we just received that check this week. So thank you, Administrator Christian, for fixing that particular situation. And we will continue to make applications for beautification efforts in the town of Andrews. One other item that we would like to ask about are the EMS services for the town of Andrews that were once housed inside the town limits that are now in Big Dan area. We want to know if this is a permanent situation or temporary. Thank you for your time on this evening.
Kay Brandon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kay Brandon, and I am a resident of Lambert Town. Lambert Town has been my home for seventy-two years. And I want you to know, I know a lot about Lambert Town. I know a lot about the people in Lambert Town, and we stand together. We love one another. We show our love. We give and we help. And I know that you are looking at this at a different point of view than what we are. That Silicon Ranch come in, we had no idea last year what this was all about. And here in the last few months, we realized it's going to be a farm. It's going to take over. It's going to run over. It's going, in the years to come, we've seen this happen. It's going to lead to problems, just like Santee Cooper and some of these other companies here a few years ago built those nuclear plants. Didn't work. Where are those nuclear plants today? Where's all that equipment, all that they put in there? Still sitting on those sites. Okay, we had a freeze the other day. I know you're all aware. We had a major freeze. International Paper Company, Biggs Company ran shut down. Santee Cooper come so close, so close. And I know quite a few people in Santee Cooper, and I got family that works in there. They told me literally, they came so close to having a major blackout. And they were, they knew that Silicon Ranch, with this project that they're bringing in, would not have been able to supply the energy that we need to. And I want you to think, we've been praying, our church and our community. We went around, we took up a petition. We can go back and get another petition. We didn't have much time to do it. And we presented that one, but I would say roughly ninety percent of our community, it's not.
Sandra Barnhill.
Good evening, council. My name is Sandra Barnhill. I was born and raised in Lambert Town community. My sister and I are opposed to the solar panel plant, or solar farm, whatever they want to call it. I know it's going to be big. Being built on the property which is adjacent to the north and the east of our property on Walker Road, this proposed solar farm can have an adverse effect on negative vegetation. I don't care what they saying about all their corrections, but, and the wildlife in many ways. Ball eagles will lose their natural habitat, interference with rain, fall and drainage, or direct contact causing injury or death. The construction process can have a detrimental effect on the environment. The whole process of producing raw materials and site facilities disturbs local ecosystems. The solar panels require some rare materials, materials like silver, whose extraction is energy intensive and polluting. There are concerns about pesticides, also chemicals from the panels like caddie, arson, lead, iron, et cetera. What becomes of the water quality if these dangerous chemicals leak into the groundwater? The entire community lives on well water. There's no water in the area. What about stormwater drainage? There hasn't been any detailed stormwater plan provided, although I did receive a letter that a permit has been applied for, for land disturbance permit or whatever. But anyhow, the water, when they build this up, it's going to run on my land. It's going to run on my, it's going to run on all our land in the area. What happens if a fire occurs and we have no full-time fire department or enough water to smother the fire? And something in the community. Please vote no. We do not want the solar farm in our community. Thank you.
Jody Newton.
Good evening. My name is Jody Newton. I live down in the Lambert Town area. Have family in adjacent this solar farm or whatever they call it. I call it a solar farm. It ain't a farm. I promise it's not a farm. Just things I just wanted to hit on. You know, I was here for, I forgot what meeting it was. I think it was October last year. Heard some things, heard some things that were said. And one thing that stepped out or stuck with me was keep the land in its natural state. In fact, I think it was young lady from Silicon Ranch said that. Solar farms are not natural. Okay, well, let's be honest with each other. I'm all for growing trees and harvesting trees or farming land, you know, and harvesting land. I'm all for it. I mean, that's how I grew up. That's what I do now on my spare time, you know. So I just like y'all to think about it real hard. I mean, this is, this is a nice, quiet community. It's a beautiful place. I mean, you know, it's right up against Santee River. And I also worry about the storm drainage, you know, or something happens to one of these solar panels, and this stuff gets in our ground with our well water, the waters that we fish for food, you know, the wildlife. You know, I own this about fencing and wetlands and all of those considerations. They make considerations. I don't think they've made any plans, you know. I, I just don't agree with it. I hope y'all think long and hard about it and vote no. Thank you for your time.
Wayne Bratcher.
Good morning or good evening, council. We appreciate y'all, and we hate to go against anyone. But this is something that we're against, and we speak out, and we ask him for y'all's vote. We believe it's got global warming. We know it's got noise. As they said, before me, it's dangerous materials. Maybe it's never got in the water system, but it could. And our children and grandchildren, we looking after them. They say the panels last thirty-three years. Not satisfied what's going to happen in thirty-three years. The code's got to be changed on that land. They build a solar panel farm. So y'all got to change that. So y'all got to change that. We asking you not to, if I interpret that right. We are asking you not. We asking that it be built anywhere out of Lambert Town. We don't care where you build it, but we don't want it at Lambert Town. If my dad down at Bratcher was here, he'd have more than enough to say. He considers y'all friends and family. And I do too. We are close community. Lambert Town's one voice. But we asking, we against it. We need your support. We can't do it without you. They can't do it without you. We need you as well as you need us. We are one community. We are a close Christian community. We are good people. We might say some negative things sometime, but we all do. But we asking for your support.
Good afternoon, County Council. My name is Pam Amerson. I've came and spoke a couple of times last year and like Mr., like Wayne said, we're depending on y'all and our community is in y'all's hands, each one of y'all, to make this decision. And it's going to change our lives, you know, once y'all make that decision, if y'all go forward with this decision. And we are a close community and most of us are family somehow. Our grandmothers are, we are married into this community. And Silicon Ranch is in this for the money and for the profit of it, but this is our livelihood. This is our home. This is our home. This is our community, each one of us. And it's going to affect us, our children, our grandchildren, the way we, the rivers, we don't know what the future may hold, what this may do. And we're asking you to consider our community and each family that is here, that are here tonight. And our land is going to be, our value is going to go down. Our home value is going to go down. Some of this land has been in our families for over 100 years. And yeah, hundreds of years. I live on my husband's great-granddaddy's property and most of the land is air property and we keeping it for our family. We looking to keep this for our children, our grandchildren. And it's a lifetime and we want you to consider what this decision is going to do, the impact it's going to have on us, on our community. And we asking you to please consider our community and vote no to this. And we know change is coming and we looking for energy in different areas, but there's more land other places besides in our community, in the heart of our community. This is part of our, please vote.
Good evening, Council. Chairman Moran, welcome to the newly elected. I'm Beverly Thompson and I own several properties in St. Slade Road and have air property that joins the land that is under the proposal for the rezoning for the future of solar panel site, farm site. Silicon Ranch purchased this property under the current zone, knowing that it was not suitable for a solar farm. Rezoning does not work in the current land use. Years ago, when the county, which was Boyd Johnson and Miss Holly Richardson, they came out to our community church to make us choose our zone. They promised that our land would not be destroyed and would keep our land a rural community. We love our rural community. We have taught to respect the land. We're taught to preserve the land, protect the land, work and live off the land. Rezoning will change this for us and the future generations. We don't want to be overprouded. We don't want to have intense traffic. We want, I don't want to have more safety issues or noise or the reduction of our property value. So I'm asking you, Council, how can destroy 2,000 acres of timberland to include wetlands and wildlife benefit us in any way? Why can't it be relocated? And like I've said before, you can make more money, but you will not. You cannot make more land. So once it's compromised or destroyed, there's no getting it back. So please don't destroy our way of living. I would like everybody here tonight that's against the solar panels to please stand up for the rezoning of the property for the summer. We're pleased with you. Please vote to the rezoning of Lambert 1 and Lambert 2 and do not allow the solar overlay and keep our land low-density residential. Are you hearing us, Council? We do not want our residential community property rezoned. Thank you, Council.
Stacy Hardy.
Hello. I wrote this three-minute speech out. My name's Stacy Hardy. I was system controller for Santee Cooper for over 20 years. I know just by everything there is, I know about the power grid, the power sources. Solar's good. I know, but it is not a replacement for when y'all power station. I guarantee you that right now. People would have frozen to death if it wasn't for when y'all stationed. But this isn't a question of transformers and power lines. This is a human question. John Steinbeck famously wrote that Texas is a state of mind. Well, Lambert Town's a state of mind and it's hard to explain unless you live there. Our forefathers didn't plan on us being a quiet little community separated from the rampant development consuming our land. We're just blessed that it happened that way. And now it's up to you to help us preserve that way of life. We're against pollution, okay? But this is a different form of pollution to us. Just empathize with us for a minute. Imagine a big industrial boot just stepped into your backyard, okay? And you're afraid if you crack that door just a little bit, that boot's going to kick it wide open. Expanded power plants, battery storage facilities, more transmission networks. Everyone in this room appreciates what you do. And if they don't, they should. But I want to tell you this. Put yourself in our shoes for a moment. You visit your daughter, you're in the backyard drinking tea, her belly's a little swollen. She's pregnant with your child, your first grandchild. And you look over, there's 200-foot buffer, which is about from the front door Walmart to the dairy section. And there's that power plant and you're here to hum from 600,000 solar panels and inverters. Doesn't seem like it's that far away. Are you going for your daughter, for our daughters, to live in such a, in that area?
Hello, everyone. My name's Frances Terry and I live in Lambert Town. My husband and I both got a letter in the mail this week from Silicon Ranch telling us what, you know, they had decided they were trying to get the permits and stuff. That's fine, but we, we don't want our property rezoned. When I look out my back door, I look out at this property and like Stacy just said, 200, that's, that's not, that's not a lot of distance. And I'm going to look out my back door every day and be able to see these panels and hear these panels? This property that we have, we have two acres and we live on 191nd Drive and it butts up to it. And I don't want to leave my property like this to my children and my grandchildren, but this is all we have. And we don't want it destroyed. A few years ago, when we had a bad storm, I took, taking pictures and it looked like I had a river in my backyard because of the water, because we live in a low-lying area. My front yard, my side yard was flooded. I can't imagine what kind of water that we'll have when, if this takes place, if this rezone, they come there. Couple weeks ago, we had a neighbor that innocent to him, he started burning stuff. It got away from him. They had to bring two fire trucks. One was sitting in my yard, one was down at his area. And they brought two tractors in to stop it from coming in my yard to burning my house down. My thought is, my God, if these panels had been there, it would have been an explosion. I wouldn't have a home today. We not against solar panels, just not where they're, they're wanting to put them. Let's put them somewhere else where there is no residents around.
Leona Miller.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to address a couple of issues with the application. The first with the application for Silicon Ranch is that the address is incorrect. The address listed the city as Lambert and that is not a city in Georgetown County. The second issue is Santee Timberland apply for this change. And now in the, what you all get ready to vote on, it says Silicon Ranch. How can you all change from Santee Timberland and then turn around and vote for Silicon Ranch and they did not petition a change in the land use? Those are the two issues that we have, that I have with this going forward. It was applied, the land use was applied by Santee Timberland and Silicon Ranch purchased it in September, but they did not petition for a land use change. And I ask you all to please consider that when making your decision. Also, remember, you elected by the people for the people. The people have spoken tonight. Please listen to them.
Mr. Chairman, that's the final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's move forward with our agenda. The agenda has already been approved and one procurement matter on the consent agenda was approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That's our RFP number 22-074. We'll move on down to public hearings regarding ordinance number 22-42. An ordinance adopted by reference as published by the International Code Council, the International Building Code, the International Plumbing Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Fuel Gas Code, the International Fire Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the Standard Swimming Pool Code, the International Existing Building Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, the International Residential Code for Use on One and Two Family Dwellings Only as published by the International Court Council Incorporated and the National Electric Code as published by the National Fire Protection Association as the building codes of the County of Georgetown, South Carolina. The floor is now open for comments regarding ordinance number 22-42. Public hearing, I'm sorry. Seeing no one desire to speak on ordinance number 22-42, the public hearing is now closed. We move down to resolution proclamations. We begin with resolution number 23-01.
Good evening, Council. This resolution relates to something that was discussed quite thoroughly at your December meeting. We talked then a good bit about the coastal azon and what is called the limo line, which is the limit of moderate wave action on the new flood maps, which we are set to adopt this May, and how those relate to the building code. Our current building code and the proposed building code that is on the agenda for tonight both require that structures within what's called a coastal azon have to conform to the requirements of the V-zone. This will create issues for many structures in those areas, which will become, then become non-conforming, as well as increase the cost for new construction in those areas. There is a drawing in your packet that shows how the coastal azon is delineated. Basically, what's called the limo line marks the inland limit of the zone and everything in the direction that that line is pointing is the coastal azon. Coastal azon is a new term for us in Georgetown County, but this requirement, again, has been in the building code since 2015. It didn't have any effect on us at that time and doesn't currently as of today, because we don't currently have a coastal azon on our flood maps. That will change in May, once we adopt the new maps that are provided by FEMA. Again, I just want to reiterate that that coastal azon language is in the building code today. It is in the proposed building code. It's essentially the adoption of the new flood maps that will make it an issue for us. What we are proposing to address this problem is that we follow the procedure that's outlined in state code for applying to the Building Codes Council of the state for a building code modification that would be specific to Georgetown County. This code, as prescribed in the state law, requires that the governing body give authority to a staff member, whether that be the building official, the county attorney, the planning director, to apply for an amendment to the building code. Based on the building officials review, the sections we believe need amending are Section R 322 of the IRC, or the International Residential Code, and 1612 of the International Building Code. Both of these exceed the requirements of the NFIP, or the National Flood Insurance Program. I've included some maps in your packet. These maps don't show all the proposed coastal azons, but they do give some good examples of areas that will be included. And there's a section of Pauli's Island near Martin Luther King Drive, 17. There are two maps there of areas in Wedgefield. There are quite a few properties in Debby that will be affected and a good bit section of Merle's Inlet up towards the county line. Those are the light pink areas, basically seaward of the limo line on the map. The data that we have, based on GIS data from, which actually is 2017, so it is old data, but we are anticipating that this would affect approximately 2,200 to 2,500 structures within those zones at this time. So we are basically looking for your support for this resolution so that we can make application to the Building Codes Council for an amendment to the building code.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from Council?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Richardson, the counties to the north and south of us are also going to be adopting this, I take it? We're on even playing ground?
That's correct. They will be adopting the same international codes as recommended by the state.
Do, do we know if there's any in, I see Ms. Elliott back there, he might can answer this. Is this, is there any chance this code could be lessened in its severity by the State House?
I, I think it could be. We've discussed that as well. We just feel that the most efficient method for us at this point would be to apply specifically for Georgetown County. We certainly have had those discussions, I think, with other entities. And Stephen, if you want to add something, feel free. We just feel that this would be the most direct method for us at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yeah, I'm through. Go ahead.
As I recall, Ori County and Charleston County are already under the auspices of the latest flood maps and we are not. Is that true? So, so we are in a kind of a different predicament than they are, right? Now, so what we need to do tonight is we need to approve this resolution and get it in your hands. And then do we need to hope we can turn this around before the May deadline?
That would be the hope. We have never done this before, to my knowledge. So we don't have a good understanding of what that timeframe would be, but that would certainly be our hope. that timeframe would be, but that would certainly be our hope.
If not, if we don't make that deadline, then we're going to be without a paddle, correct?
Without a paddle?
We'll be up the creek without a paddle.
Right, and then anything that happens within those areas would be have to meet the V-zone up until such point as we could.
Right, so we just may, we need to make this move and keep our fingers crossed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing now you're ready to go forward to vote. May we have a motion regarding resolution number 23 dash 01?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept resolution 23 dash 01.
The motion for approval of resolution number 23 dash 01, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Newton, with move by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move on down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22 dash 40, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that basically clarifies a lot-size minimum of one acre in the Preservation Agriculture District, and that minimum will be allowed as long as the density limit of one unit per 25 acres is maintained. We haven't had any changes to this since second reading approval. As a reminder, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and there was no public comment at the hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Seeing then is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 40?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 40.
Motion by Councilman Anderson for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Both? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 22 dash 41, the third reading. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, this is another text amendment to the zoning ordinance. The purpose of this change is basically to give the digital files that comprise the zoning map the same force and effect as the original paper zoning maps, as is in the ordinance today. Basically, the digital maps, as we view them on GIS, would become what's defined as the official zoning map for Georgetown County. Again, there have been no changes to this since second reading, and we did receive a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Seeing then is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 41?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 41.
A motion from Councilman Anderson for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Keeping you busy in that, Ms. Richardson. Ordinance number 22 dash 42.
Yes, sir. This is third reading for the adoption of the 2021 International Residential Code, International Building Code, and the other associated codes that have been adopted by the state.
Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council?
Questions, sir. This now is just to approve the residential and the general international codes, and then at our state level, we'll have some exceptions to this. Is that, is that part of this, this approval? Or do we have to go through this thing with the A-zone before we can get, get the, our recommendations for state code to be able to use? And you know where I'm coming from.
Well, actually, there's a key statement missing from this agenda item, and that is a statement with South Carolina modifications.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
That's, that's missing from this statement. But yes, we will be adopting the 21 codes. Now, some of these, there's no date with these codes, like the swimming pool code is going to remain on the 2018 code. I did this basically to save the county some money because there's really no significant changes to swimming pool code. It's not a mandatory code as put forth by the state. So some of the codes that are not mandatory but necessary to do our job, we're going to remain on the 18 code because it minimized purchasing additional code books and that kind of reference material to do so. But the mandatory codes with South Carolina modifications.
Okay, but those others are optional, so we're okay with that.
They're optional, but like I said, necessary.
Right.
We got a tremendous amount of swimming pools and spas and that kind of stuff. So very necessary, but not necessary that they be on the 21 code cycle.
So if we approve this, then we're going to have to do an amendment before we do.
Well, we're not prepared with the work of the council, but I would think you'd have to amend the language to add with South Carolina modification before you take the vote. Otherwise, I could tell you based on reading the new code and parts that I have read, you would much rather adopt the South Carolina modified code than you would the code as written.
Absolutely. Can we defer to Mr. Watson for some direction on how we go forward?
You can defer. I don't know whether you get the direction, but we'll try. As I understand it from Mr. Elliott, Mr. Elliott, you're saying that I would guess International Code Council right in there to insert with South Carolina modifications?
Yeah, I think you need to do an amendment to the ordinance to add with South Carolina with South Carolina modifications. Vote on the amendment. If it passes, then vote on the ordinance.
Well, it would be, it would be passing the ordinance as amended with, yeah, as amended with South Carolina modifications being added in. And I, you know, if, let's see, this is on, what are we at, third reading on this one? Is that right?
It is.
So, yes, third reading. If you're, if the intent is to adopt the, with South Carolina modifications, I think you can, you can certainly vote as amended with South Carolina modifications, which can be incorporated into the final text for signature.
But we won't have to pass the ordinance and then go to the amendment and then come back the normal, the normal procedure we use?
Yeah, I mean, you, you've amended before, so yes, sir. You call for the motion for the amendment and then call for the final vote, a vote as amended.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any further questions for Mr. Elliott or Ms. Richardson? All right, may we have a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 42?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 22 dash 42.
Okay, is there, you have a motion from Councilman Newman? Newton, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Anderson to amend the ordinance to add with South Carolina modification. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
On the amendment? Second by Counselor Mercado. We move out, okay, we move to discussion. Any discussion regarding the amendment? We first vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to ordinance number 22 dash 42, which includes with SC modification, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, amendment passed. So now we've voted on the main motion, which includes the modification. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. I think that's correct, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We move down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22 dash 27. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, and I will address items 11A and 11B together, and that, this includes ordinance 22 dash 27 and 22 dash 28 regarding the solar farm. As you know, the approval for a solar farm, based on our ordinance, requires the creation of a solar energy facility floating district, an overlay zone. The creation of this overlay zone requires a rezoning process, which is why this is on the agenda tonight. I did want to clarify that Santie Timberland was the original property owner for this track at the time of application back in the summer. As the project has made its way through, Silicon Ranch purchased the property and became the owner. They were originally assigned as the agent for the rezoning and were included on the application. When they became the owner, they then submitted us a new letter of ownership, which has then now been placed in our file for this rezoning as well. This property involves 1,200 acres of the site that will be developed with solar panels. The federal and state permitting for the site is currently underway. As was mentioned, they have also applied to Georgetown County Stormwater for a land disturbance permit, as well as to DEHEC OCRM for land disturbance. Both of those permits are under review, and each has their own separate publicly viewing comment periods. Of course, any rezoning or overlay approval here tonight would be conditional on those and any other construction permits that were needed before any work could begin on the site. Our ordinance does require, and their plan does show, 200-foot buffers around, against all residential areas, as they're showing on their site plan, and landscaping within this area must reach at least 10 feet in height within a 10-year time period as required. The areas with the panels that are shown with the panels will be fenced. Silicon Ranch has indicated that they will use wildlife fencing that would allow for the passage of small animals, and that any wildlife corridors along the wetlands or streams will be allowed to remain. They are now projecting a wetlands impact of less than 0.5 acres, as would be permitted by the necessary wetlands agencies. There's also an FAQ that was submitted by the applicant that's included in your packet that addresses some of the concerns that have been mentioned, such as health effects, the materials in the panel, and the effects on the property values. The applicants are here if you have some more technical questions about those aspects as well. The future land use map for this track shows it as low-density residential. If this rezoning is approved, staff is prepared to designate a public semi-public for the site. As you know, we deferred this item to allow for additional review and revision of the decommissioning plan. The plan has been revised since you saw it at the last meeting. It now includes cost estimates for both of the salvage value of the panels and the actual decommissioning of the site. Based on the plan, these costs will be reviewed every five years by a third-party engineer that would be approved by Georgetown County. And once those decommissioning costs exceed the salvage value, then a bond or escrow account will be provided to the county. Also, within 180 days of operation for the site, then they will submit a restoration plan to the county to be reviewed and approved for restoring the site back to its conditions in the event that the solar panels were to be removed. A public hearing was held on this back in July by the Planning Commission. As a reminder, several people spoke there in opposition. There was a representative from Coastal Conservation League that spoke in favor, and the Planning Commission vote at that time was for approval with a vote of five to zero. There were two abstentions. That vote was for the rezoning of the overlay district. They also recommended five to zero in favor of the future land use map amendment. The ordinance 2228, which is the rezoning ordinance, has been revised since the first reading to include a specific reference to the decommissioning plan. And I'll be glad to answer any questions from.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council for Ms. Richardson?
No, I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Richardson, is there any concern concerning what one of the speakers brought up concerning these applications?
In terms of the ownership changing?
Yeah.
Sir, I spoke with Mr. Watson about that prior to the meeting. Like I said, they did file with us a new letter stating that they now own the property, and they were involved with the zoning from the beginning. Their name was on the application signature as well.
So we're, you think, Mr. Watson, you think we're in the clear if this thing was to pass?
As I understand it, the timber company appointed or signed the solar company as its agent from the beginning. So the solar company was acting on behalf of and as the agent of the timber company. So then once the solar company purchased from the timber company, its interest merged as from agent to owner. So it seems to be a distinction without a difference. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Richardson from council?
One question, Ms. Richardson. As for the decommissioning plan, what is the timeframe for that? 30, 40 years? And based on what was presented, are you satisfied with the information presented?
Applicant has indicated that they are planning for a useful life of 40 years for the panels. And yes, sir, we have reviewed the new submission. Staff has reviewed it and is comfortable with it as it's been presented.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, there a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 27?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve ordinance number 2227.
A motion for approval from Councilman Anderson, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Elliott. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, I do have some discussion. I've looked out there at you folks for quite a few hours now and talked to a lot of you on the telephone, and what I'd like to do right now is talk to you a little bit about what, what we struggle with to try to manage the county here, the local government. The county above us has a budget that's someone I heard say a lot more than us, and that's true, and below us, a lot more than us. Their budgets are both about $300 million a year, and I'll get into that in a minute. But the first thing I wanted to talk about is just the Waukeemaw Neck and the mainland side of the county and our populations and what we're doing. So I'll start with that. And on the mainland side of the county, we've got four districts with about 9,000 people each for a total of 36,000 or 56% of the population of the county. On the Waukeemaw Neck, on the Waukeemaw Neck, we have three districts of 9,000 people each with a total of 28,000 people or 44% of the, of the population. Now, I'm going to go back to when I was first elected back in January of 2000, or took office in January of 2011. My friend, Sal Hemingway, was our administrator at that time, and the first thing that he did was take me on a tour of the entire county, and it was overwhelming. But one of the things he said to me during that visit, he said, "You realize that you're going to be dealing with a county that's kind of unusual in that we have two totally different demographics within the county. We've got one demographic on the Waukeemaw Neck and another demographic on the mainland, and they're, they're definitely, the people are different. It's just different communities, everything else." And so I took that, I took that in mind, and he said, "Also, what I want you to remember is the people on the Waukeemaw Neck want to be involved in everything we do, but the people on the mainland side, they just want to be left alone." And I'll never, I'll never forget him saying that. So I come back on in office two years ago in January of 2020, and things had changed quite a bit from what I remembered for my first four years on council. And by that, what I mean is that there were, a lot of people were coming up before council at the, at the public session and talking about things like, "You're not cleaning out our ditches. We're having flooding. We need, we need our fire stations manned and, and have fire trucks there. We don't have enough EMS. We, all of the things like that." And I, and I was taken about by the change in the way the people that just wanted to be left alone had come to life and had came before us and asked us to do things. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the struggle we're having with that. And what that is, is each, each of our districts spends about $10 million a year on essential and non-essential services. The essential service includes things like the sheriff's department, our fire departments, county. county fire on this side of the river, our EMS people, public works, all the things that they do as far as keeping, keeping the ditches cleaned out and the roads graded and et cetera, et cetera. And a judicial system, that's something we, none of us want to pay any attention to. We don't want to have anything to do with it. But it's costly to do that. And then in the way of non-essential services, the two big ones that come to mind are parks and recreation and aging services. And we're lacking in both of those. We have people all the time calling saying, "Hey, we need to open up another gym," or "We don't have enough people at this park facility." And those are just some of the things that I hear. And I hear them also from my fellow members of council, from them trying to take care of their constituents, not only in District 3, but in District 4, District 5, and District 7. And of course, on the other side of the river, those people that were hollering at me 11 years ago, or whatever it was, they're still hollering. So we're dealing with that. And the basis, the crux of the problem we're having, like anybody else, is money. So let me talk about that for just a minute. We have got, we have got a revenue stream of $70 million in revenue comes in from property taxes and other taxes and fees. This revenue is used for operation and maintenance for the entire county. That includes wages and salaries for county employees and materials. Materials include anything from pencils and papers to heavy equipment and diesel fuel. The remaining 30 million that we, we come by comes from the state and federal government in the way of grants, et cetera, et cetera. But here's where, here's where we've got a real imbalance and we need, we need to do something, and that's really what we're trying to do here. And that's that 80% or about 56 million of that $70 million comes from the Waukamau Neck, while 20% or 14 million comes from the four districts on the mainland. So that means that you're actually spending 10 million, but your taxes and, your property taxes and other fee, and other fees are only bringing in 3.5. So we have to make that up with, with the surplus, I'll call, from the Waukamau Neck. But we're still not keeping up, and we're not satisfied with what we're doing to take care of you all with your, with your services. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And what we decided to do was make a concerted effort in 2020 in January to try to start to have some residential and commercial development over here on this side of the river and with, along with our industrial development. So that's really what we're working to do. And I just wanted to share that with you and let you know that we're struggling, but we're trying to, we're trying to increase our tax base so that we can do a better job of serving, serving you folks. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
It's it. We have a, we have a second. And we've had discussion. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 27?
Mr. Chairman, and to the constituents of the Lambert Town community, back in October when we first started this dialogue, I indicated that I would listen to the constituents on their concerns. All due respect, sir, one of the things that I have listened, listened to is the concerns of the citizens. I'm at the point until I hear further information, I've researched, I'm sure all my colleagues, we've researched, we've listened to information from Silicon Ranch, been taken into consideration. But at this point, until... Okay. Again, my focus is the concern of the constituents in Lambert Town. And as I mentioned before, I hear you, and we will make a decision. I will make my decision based on your concerns tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have all in favor of approval of ordinance number 22 dash 27. Please raise your hand. We have five. We have in favor, Councilman Anderson, Counselor Mercado, Counselor Johnson, Morant, and Elliott. Councilman Newton and Carolina. Motion passed. We move on down to ordinance number 22 dash 28. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 28?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 28.
The motion for approval from Councilman Anderson is there second?
I second it.
Second, second by Councilman Elliott. Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the revised text?
Mr. Chairman, I move for a, for the revised text to the ordinance.
You have a motion to amend ordinance number 22 dash 28 to incorporate the revised text. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Mercado. We first vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All opposed? We have five in favor, two in opposition. Amendment passed. Now, we vote on the main motion. All in favor of the approval of ordinance number 22 dash 28 with the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, are we going to have some discussion on this one?
Yes, we can have discussion. My apology.
No, no, no problem, because I want these folks to understand that we have done a lot of due diligence here. And I know from several meetings here and telephone calls from you folks, you're really worried about toxicity of, of the cadmium in this process. I come from a technical background, so I waded through a lot of technical information, and I've just got some general bullets that I wanted to share with you. As I understand the process, Silicon Ranch is purchasing solar panels from a company called First Solar, which makes the panels in Perryburg, Ohio. They are producing panels using thin film photovoltaic transducers using cadmium and tellurium and a stable compound called cadmium telluride. Photovoltaic transducers convert solar or sun energy into electrical energy. Cadmium is a heavy metal like lead, but it's much more toxic. When the cadmium is mixed or alloyed with tellurium, it becomes more stable and not nearly as toxic. Once, once fabricated, the cadmium telluride transducers are then sandwiched between two pieces of glass, along with a metal conductor sheet and an adhesive sheet at the top and the bottom. This produces an air watertight seal around the metal semiconductors called a hermetic seal. These finished products are about the same size as a four-by-eight sheet of plywood. This panel design has been subjected to testing, which covers all physical and environmental conditions, which I would expect to be performed, including simulated life testing associated with toxic air and water contamination. With regard to the material reclamation, the panels are designed to last 20, 20 years or more. Silicon Ranch is working with a company called SolarCycle that is in the business of recycling solar panels for various materials used in the panels. SolarCycle is hoping to be able to recycle cadmium telluride panels in the second or third quarter of 2023. I also did, looked at, at the assumptions that Solar Ranch was making as far as bringing in more revenue so we can bring more services to this side of the river. The assumption, Solar Ranch Incorporated has agreed on an annual fee in lieu of tax for the 2,061-acre tract based on the tax payments of $1,800 per milliwatt and a goal of generating 200 milliwatts per year. This equates to $360,000 per year. Prorated over a 15-year period, the total income to the county would be $5.4 million. That will, that will go a long way to help us in the problem we've got with serving you all the way we want to serve you. I also took a look at some, and I heard this again tonight, about developing, developing that 2,000 acres. The way I see it, there's about 1,000 acres that are developable, that could be developed. So I said, "Okay, let's say that we broke it up into half-acre lots. That would be 1,000 acres, but actually, we're looking at 2,000 lots. But then, when we take care of our infrastructure needs, we end up with about 1,600 buildable lots." So I looked at our tax rolls for District 3 and a single family, some, single-family homes in District 3 appraised at $200, and I used a low, low figure there. I don't know that we could build houses for $200 anymore. But anyway, taxed at the primary 4% rate are invoiced for $1,125 per year, which includes property taxes and stormwater and households' fees. That would give us over 15 years, $14 million, $14.3 million in property taxes and other taxes and fees to work with, while the solar farm was going to give us 5.4. Lot of disparity there. But then, when I looked at a couple of things, the first one that came to mind with me living over on the Waukamau Neck, and we've got the exact opposite program, problem over there. We're dealing with population density. It's getting, it's getting tough to live over there. So looking at this with an average of three people in each one of those homes over the, and built out in 15 years, you're looking at almost 6,000 people. And if I were you all, I think I'd rather have the solar farm than I would 6,000 people. And as far as the savings, are the, 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 the property, the, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, please, please bear with me. As far as what that revenue stream brings in, then what are you going to do? How are we going to build elementary schools, middle schools, high schools? Because we're going to need them with another 6,000 people right over there in your community, plus all the commercial things that would grow up. We're going to need probably four-lane highways for 17A. These are just things that I thought about. If I were, if I had to make this decision, and I just wanted to explain to you, I have looked at this, and this is, this is the way I feel about the whole situation. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of approval of ordinance number 22 dash 28 with the amendment to incorporate the revised text, please raise your hand. Opposed? We have five in favor, two in opposition. Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on down to ordinance number 22 dash 39.
Last chance to get out.
Yes, sir. You can, you can call me. I'm easy to find. I'd love to talk to you. Not, no problem. Yes, sir.
We put our faith and confidence in you. You failed us for money, for money. And somebody sitting up there, I'm not going to jail. You can put me in jail. I'll go to jail for my people, for my community. But somebody sitting there, they haven't even been out to Lambert Town. You don't even know what Lambert Town is. And like you said, Mr. Anderson, I had an uncle live next door to me, and he lived to be a front of jail.
Do we move on down to ordinance number 22 dash 39?
Good evening, council. Happy New Year. This is second reading of an ordinance to provide for a fee in lieu of tax agreement with Sherpa 6.
Did your mic, did your mic on?
I think so. Can you hear me? How about, felt better?
Okay.
Okay, I'll start over. Good evening. If everybody's doing well, good evening, council. Happy New Year. This is second reading of an ordinance to provide for a fee in lieu of property tax agreement with Sherpa 6 for aviation services at the Georgetown County Airport. Sherpa will invest in constructing two hangars at an investment of approximately $6.6 million and will create approximately 41 high-paying jobs. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any questions for Ms. Harrison from council? If not, then a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 39.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve ordinance 22 dash 39.
If a motion for approval from Counselor Mercado is there second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carolina. Is there a motion to amend?
I move to amend.
Yeah, to incorporate the text, I'm sorry. We have a motion to amend from Counselor Johnson. It's there second on the amended motion.
Second.
We have second on the amended motion by Counselor Newton and Mercado. Let's first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? We'll now go to the main motion. Is there any discussion regarding the main motion? Regarding approval of ordinance number 22 dash 39 with the amendment? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the main motion with the amendment? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. We move down to ordinance number 22 dash 43. Councilor Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is simply second reading for an ordinance that authorizes county council as well as the several county boards and commissions to maintain order in public meetings and to provide some rules and procedures for doing so. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Councilor Watson? Seeing none, is there a motion to, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 43?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of ordinance 22 dash 43.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carolina for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Johnson. Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the text?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Mercado. Is there a second on the proposed amended motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Newton. We will first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, we are now, amended motion carries. We will now vote on the main motion, which is approval of ordinance number 22 dash 43 with the amendment to incorporate the text. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Ordinance number 22 dash 24, I'm sorry, 22 dash 44 is being deferred. We move down to ordinance number 22 dash 45. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. I will address items 11F and 11G together. Both ordinances, 45 and 40...
I can't hear what she's saying.
46.
46.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
This is a request to rezone one parcel of approximately .59 acres from 10,000-square-foot residential R10 to GC general commercial. Parcel is located at 13160 Ocean Highway in Polys Island. This is a vacant track that is currently split zone between GC and R10, and the applicant would like to rezone a .59 acre portion from R10 to GC to allow for a new commercial business that would front on Highway 17.
to allow for a new commercial business that would front on Highway 17. And there is currently 0.38 acres of commercial zoning on the site. And again, the area in question here to be rezoned is 0.59 acres. SAF does not feel that this would be considered spot zoning due to the adjacent GC zoning that is contiguous to the south and the historical commercial zoning along Highway 17 in both Litchfield and Polley's Island. The future land use map does show this rear portion as medium density residential. So if the rezoning is approved, a change to the map would be warranted for the 0.97 acre area that is to be rezoned. I'll remind you that, of course, there is a 90-foot front yard setback on Highway 17, which affects the use of this property and necessitates the need for commercial zoning further back on the site. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this issue at their November 17 meeting. Two people were there and spoke against the request citing a water and sewer easement on the property and concern for the unknown commercial development. The commission did vote 5 to 1 to recommend approval for the rezoning and 5 to 1 to recommend approval for the amendment to the future land use map.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-45?
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve ordinance 22-45.
There's a motion from Councilor Mercado for approval of ordinance number 22-45. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, going back up, please, item 11E. Ordinance number 22-44, that matter is being deferred, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I think you may need to make a motion or to defer and vote since it was not part of, it's not listed under deferred items under number 16 on the agenda.
Thank you. We'll go back to... Let me just finish the, since the two ordinances are contiguous there, let's just finish those. Maybe we'll go back to the particular one. Thank you. We move down to ordinance number 22-46. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-46?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilman Newton for approval of ordinance number 22-46. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elliott and Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now we move back up to item 11E on our agenda, ordinance number 22-44. Is there a motion to defer?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Mercado to defer ordinance number 22-44. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? The motion carries. We'll now move down to ordinance number 22-47. Councilor Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this simply, we, Sherpa 6, which is referenced earlier for Philo, is under a license agreement out of the airport, and this is simply converting that to a lease arrangement with them. The substantive terms of the license and the lease will be the same.
Any questions for Councilor Watson? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-47?
Motion to approve 22-47.
Okay, it's a motion to approve by Councilor Mercado, ordinance number 22-47. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the proposed text into the ordinance?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Oppose? Amendment passed. We'll now vote on the main motion, which incorporates the amendment, which incorporates the text, I should say. Any discussion regarding the main motion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Councilor Watson. We'll go down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-01, which will be read into the record only. Ordinance number 23-01 to amend the Georgetown each state's planned development located on the north side of Highway 521 Western I-Mine Curve between Indian Hut Road and Kent Road, identified as TMS number 02-0420-002-01-00. To decrease the commercial acreage along Highway 521, add residential lots along the front of the PD and increase open space. We'll move down to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion for approval of regular council meeting minutes of November 8, 2022, for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before council?
Mr. Chairman, and this is to Madam Administrator. Making a request. After the last session, we had Mr. Bill Davies, the vice chair of the South Carolina American Revolution, that came and talked about funding available to further enhance the tourism, historical tourism industry here. Would you take that into consideration to resuscitate the Georgetown Historic Commission that I understand is not in effect at this time? There are a number of individuals who have indicated that they would like to be part of that historical commission and move forward to take advantages of any state funding that's offered for Georgetown County. The next action item is Green Gas USA. Back in October 24, 2021, we worked with Dominion Energy Carolina Gas to create the first natural gas injection point in my district on the Powell Road. Could we research to find out whether or not we'd move forward to engage Green Gas USA? Because their intention was to extract methane gas out of the landfills and livestock farms to infuse, to create a better product, to find out the status on that. And we'll wait for the results of the information there. Thank you.
Any further business coming before council? Hearing no further business, there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Carolina for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please raise your hand. Oppose? We stand adjourned.